Almighty God, we come tonight, dear Lord, thanking you, Lord, for another day of life that you have given to us. We thank you, Father, for this city, for our leaders, Lord. We ask your blessings upon each and every one, Father. We know that it is a great responsibility. But again, Lord, please bless each and every one as they make decisions for the welfare of this city. And, Father, as we come tonight, Lord, we are remembering a precious one in our lives, dear Lord, that we nearly miss. So we pray, Father, you'll bless this family, Lord, continually, as we continually, Lord, to remember a friend, a family member. And we thank you, Father, for your service and dedication to this city all of these years, Lord, that you served. So we just pray you'd ask your blessing, Lord, upon us tonight, as the council and the mayor meets together, dear Lord, again, to decide for the welfare of this city. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. In his name we pray. Amen.
Witcher?
Here.
Oliver?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Lowery?
Here.
Hammer?
Here.
Dickinson?
Here.
Trigg?
Here.
Odenkamp?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Honeycutt?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Booker?
Here.
You have all 12 present.
Thank you. You have in front of you a copy of the minutes from our last meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept those into record.
Motion.
Have a motion, my councilmember Norris in second.
Second.
Councilmember Booker. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next on our agenda, as you all know, in May of this year, Councilwoman Sheila Oliver passed away. And she was a dear friend to me, a mentor to me as a city councilperson some two years ago, and a great help to me as I acclimated. There's a picture on my computer screensaver that shows her, and it looks almost like she's got me by the ear, sitting right down there, telling me how I needed to conduct myself. So she's been truly a dear friend to me and so helpful in the first part of my administration here, and I dearly appreciate that. I wanted to give the family a remembrance from this body to that family. And I asked a good friend of hers, Mr. Jerry Lyons, to create something more than a framed certificate to pass on to her. And I think Mr. Lyons has got that. If you would bring that around and has a brief word that he wants to share with us.
Mayor, I'll ask you to help me up here to say that I'm coming in, thank you, to be the one we really did a work on wrapping this, but I'll let you have a hold of that. And I'll just make just a couple of comments here. I was certainly honored when the mayor asked, he called one day at work, and asked if I would consider creating something special to recognize Sheila and her service to this community. When I got home that evening, I told my bride about that request, and she soon spoke with Beth Thornton, who then reminded us both that Sheila's for Sheila's love of red roses. And so that became the perfect idea for what you're about to see. And as I was making that project, and I guess during the delicate process of making that memorial, I realized that every single piece of what you'll see in a moment, the pieces of rose and stems represented dozens and dozens of family, friends, and even strangers she touched during her lifetime. Her love of appreciation for and passion to serve and help others was indeed her signature, and I am glad that I could call her a lifelong friend. Gary, I hope you and your family enjoy. To you and to the rest of the family, we would like to present you with this keepsake, showing our appreciation for all that your wife and your mother, your sister, did for this community. We know she loved the red roses, and I think on the back, we also have an inscription that says she did it her way. So I want to thank again Mr. Lyons for your hard work and dedication, and we want to thank you and your family for lending her to us for all these years. Thank you all so much. Dear friend to us all. Thank you. At this time, we want to memorialize into our city's records just how much she meant
to us as a body and us to as a city, so the city attorney will read a resolution in her honor. A resolution in honor and memory of Sheila Oliver. That whereas Sheila Oliver was born on November 1, 1949, in Glasgow, Kentucky, whereas Sheila Oliver was the daughter of the late Leroy and Bernadine Williams, and is survived by her husband Gary Oliver, sons Blake and Josh Oliver, brothers Bernard Williams and wife Becky, Tony Williams and wife Sherry, and Todd Williams and wife Sheila, and sister Rita Vance and husband Don, niece Lauren Williams and nephews Chase, Spencer, and Hunter Williams. And whereas Sheila Oliver was a woman devoted to God and family, having been married to her loving husband Gary for 45 years, having been the dote mother and actively involved in the lives and activities of both of her sons Blake and Josh, and having been a lifelong member of the First United Methodist Church. Whereas Sheila Oliver graduated from Glasgow High School in 1967 and developed her secretarial skills at Western Kentucky University before heading to Washington, where she began her professional career with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, later returning to her hometown and associating with several businesses, including Williams Construction, Fisher Corporation, and the New Farmers National Bank. And whereas Sheila Oliver was also a small business owner in Glasgow, when in 1985 she and her brother Bernard Williams formed a petroleum products business called Oliver Williams Company, which she operated for 11 years. And whereas Sheila Oliver in 2002 joined the staff at TJ Sampson Community Hospital as an education coordinator, thereby expanding her professional experience, as well as her involvement in Glasgow and Barron County. And whereas Sheila Oliver, with the exception of her stint in Washington DC, was a lifelong resident of Glasgow, was extremely proud of her hometown and was very active in the community's civic affairs, serving on the Glasgow City Council and various city-related committees from 1985 through 2002, serving as the city's clerk administrator from January 2003 through December 2010, serving for a second time on the Glasgow City Council from January 2013 until her passing, and also being very active with the South Central Kentucky Cultural Center, serving as president and volunteering as bookkeeper for the Arts and Antique Mall on the square. Whereas Sheila Oliver will be fondly remembered as a dedicated public servant, a respected community leader, and a loyal and honorable woman. And whereas the passing of Sheila Oliver on May 28 of this year has left a void which cannot be filled, and she is mourned by the citizens of this municipality and county, now therefore be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. One, the City of Glasgow does hereby express its deep and abiding respect and honor for Councilwoman Sheila Oliver, and further expresses its sense of grief and loss upon her passing, and extends to her family and many friends its most sincere sympathy. And number two, the City Clerk of the City of Glasgow is hereby directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to Councilwoman Oliver's husband Gary Oliver and her two sons Blake and Josh Oliver. We want to thank you all so much for being here today. As I say, she meant so much to us and to this community. Thank you all. We know that she's dearly missed. I'll entertain a motion to accept this resolution into record. So moved by Councilmember Gross in second. Councilmember Neal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you all so much for being here today. The next item on our agenda is the second reading of the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the property located at 910 Columbia Avenue. Terry and Melissa Baker are the owners of the property located at 910 Columbia Avenue. This property is currently zoned R2, and the Bakers applied for a zone change to a B2 classification. A due process hearing was held on July 20 of this year before the Planning and Zoning Commission with this zone change request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the zone change from R2 to B2, and this ordinance will put that zone change in effect. Having heard the reading, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion, my councilmember Norris in second. Councilmember Lowery. This being the second reading, it will be a roll call vote.
Booker?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Booker.
Odenkamp?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is maybe not on your agenda, it was on the one that was emailed out to you today that was mistakenly left off, but that is the first reading of the ordinance establishing the 2015 tax rate for the city. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, there is hereby levied an ad valorem tax for the general fund of .174 dollars per $100 of assessed value on real property and .174 per $100 of assessed value on personal property, subject to taxation for municipal purposes and having taxable situs in the City of Glasgow as of the first day of January 2015, as listed in the tax assessment ledger as compiled by the Barron County Property Valuation Administrator. Section 2, all monies collected from this tax shall be paid into the general fund of the city to be used for payment of proper expenditures as determined by the council. Section 3, it is further provided that all taxpayers that may owe taxes under this levy shall pay same to the city tax collector on or before January 31, 2016. Any payer who pays his or her bill under this levy on or before November 30 of this year shall be allowed a discount of 2%. Those paying on or before December 31 of this year shall be allowed a discount of 1%. It is further provided that to the tax bill of all taxpayers who failed to pay same on or before January 31, 2016, there shall be added by way of penalty an amount equal to 6% of the total tax bill, and upon the total tax bill plus penalty, there shall be charged interest at the rate of 6% per annum from February 1, 2016 until paid. And such delinquent taxpayer shall also pay all costs and expenses incidental to any action taken by the city for the collection of such delinquent tax bills. Section 4, delinquent taxes shall be collectible under the provisions of Kentucky Revised Statutes relating to the collection of delinquent taxes by cities of the third class. Section 5, if any part of this ordinance shall be declared invalid for any reason, it shall not affect the remainder of the ordinance. All ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent that they may conflict. And section 6, this ordinance shall be in full force from and after its proper passage and publication according to law. Having heard the ordinance, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved by Councilmember Gross in second.
By Councilmember Dickinson, do we have any discussion? Hearing none. This being the first reading, will be a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. The next item that you have on the agenda is one that was sponsored by the Public Safety Committee. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 2351 concerning the humane treatment of animals. I'll summarize this ordinance for you for the first reading. Back in August 28 of 2000, the city adopted ordinance 2351, which was an ordinance relating to the humane treatment of animals. This ordinance that is being considered tonight proposes to amend ordinance 2351 by further defining what tether means and also providing some specifics with respect to how a dog may be tethered. Specifically, section 90.03 is amended to read, "If any dog is tethered, it shall be by trolley or swivel system designed to prevent choking or tangling, using a collar adjusted to fit the dog. The tether shall not be less than 10 feet in length." And then it adds this provision, "No animal shall be tethered to a fixed point for longer than 12 hours in a 24-hour period. No tether shall weigh more than 1/18 of the dog or puppy's weight. And for purposes of this provision, the term tether is defined as a rope or chain that is used to restrict an animal so that it will stay in a particular place." All the remaining provisions of ordinance 2351 stay in full force and effect. Having heard the resolution, do I have a motion to adopt? By Councilmember Odenkamp in a second. Councilmember Booker, do I have any discussion?
I do. If you give me a second, I'd like to...
Sure.
I had a lot of notes, so I need to read them to make sure I do this the right way. Before I vote no, I would like to say a few things. My family and I are dog lovers, and we have a dog that we consider a member of our family. My wife routinely donates to involuntaries at BRAWA, and I strongly believe in the proper and humane treatment of all animals. We are elected to this office to provide our community rules that, one, improve the overall welfare of our community; two, are not a financial burden on our community; and, three, are realistically enforceable with the resources we have available. The American dream has some essential parts: a family, a home, a car, and some dream of a family pet, a lot like Lassie and Ren 1010. Unfortunately, an animal's lifestyle and welfare is a direct reflection of the owner's lifestyle and welfare. In layman's terms, our pets tend to live just like we live. We do know for a fact from articles in our local newspaper, free and reduced lunch programs in our schools, and presentations to this council, that a large portion of our community live in or on the edge of poverty. This translates to a large number of those animals living in or on the edge of poverty also. Again, the chains on those animals are a direct reflection of the social slash financial change on those families. We already have an ordinance, 2351, that is designed to take care of the overall welfare of animals in our community. It is currently not an additional financial burden on our committee, and it is somewhat enforceable. What we need to find out is why this ordinance is not working. Shouldn't we be implementing the ordinance we currently have in place versus additional requirements that cannot be met? If other cities have already stated that they don't have the resources to fully monitor potential violations and enforce these additional rules, then how is Glasgow going to be any different? Where would the dogs be during the 12 hours they are untethered? If the dogs have not been socialized or house-trained, will families want their dogs in their homes during this time? How are families expected to fence their yard if they cannot have their dogs in their home while untened? How many of these dogs have been vaccinated properly to include rabies at a minimum? Is there increased risk of unsocialized dogs interacting with people or other dogs during this untethered time? And finally, how many people have been prosecuted in violation of the current regulations that we have? If we don't want this to be a burden on anyone but more of an educational opportunity, it's my belief that we need to properly implement the ordinance we currently have in place. We can supplement this by applying for those grants that would enable the purchase of equipment to help provide a more humane living environment for those pets, for those families that need it.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just to address some of the issues you brought up, and obviously, I can't address all of the answers to those questions, but one of the things that you did mention was what other cities do, and that's what I've worked with some of the officers of BRAWA to gain information. They brought to the Public Safety Committee information related to some of the surrounding areas and the ordinances that they have. For example, Bowling Green has a limit of one hour that an animal can be on a tether. Some of the other areas have, I believe, a six-hour limit and some of them a 10-hour limit. One of the issues that they have is they also only have one animal control officer. I believe right now we've got two full-time and one part-time, if that's correct, or possibly three full-time that rotate usually two on shift. But another thing that we looked at when looking at that ordinance was the main problem that we're having is a lot of the animals that either get picked up by animal control or that are turned in at the animal shelter are wearing either collars that have embedded into their skin that have to be removed because they're never adjusted to fit the animal. Or for those of you that were at the Public Safety Committee, Molly Taylor brought in a chain that was on a dog that was dropped off at the animal shelter, and the animal control officer stated that that's the biggest issue we see, is a dog is brought in with a chain that most of us had issues lifting in a grocery sack, it was so heavy. Animals that spend their entire life like that chained improperly are going to be a risk to public safety. They're not going to be a happy animal, and they're definitely not going to be a socialized animal. What we did with this ordinance wasn't to impose extra, anything hard for someone to comply with. What it did is it looked at how an animal is being tethered and some more specific, I guess, numbers, so that if an animal control officer is out, it was a little bit vague the way that it was written. And now it's very specific as to how long the tether has to be, how much it should weigh, that the collar should be adjusted to fit. In the past, if those were issues, they weren't specifically written in our ordinance, so they weren't something that could be dealt with or addressed. But looking at this issue, because of so many animals that are turned in that we have to spend money on, or that it takes forever for them to, or long periods of time for them to rehabilitate, we wanted to try to prevent that as much as possible, but also provide this as a learning opportunity. One of the things you mentioned that we had brought up in the public safety meeting was that there are grants out there where we can have donated to BRAWA and to the animal control officers tethering systems and trolley systems that are appropriate. So as animal control officers are monitoring the areas, and they know exactly where these animals are located, and they know, you know, who they need to talk to, they can stop and make it an educational opportunity and let them know that the system they have restraining their dog is no longer within the ordinance in our community. It's not what our community considers within our standards, and they're going to give them something and help them set it up so that it is within our standards and make that a teachable moment, just explaining to them the best way to keep that animal. Because when it comes down to it, animals can be expensive. It costs a lot of money to have a pet. If you're going to keep them and keep them vaccinated the way our ordinance reads, you're going to keep them healthy and happy, and it is a financial obligation. And so it needs to be something that they're willing to do and to do it within the standards of our community. And so I hope that answers some of your questions and some of the thought and research that went into drafting this ordinance.
Other discussion?
He mentioned compliance with the current ordinance a couple of times, I think, in his statements, and I wondered how we are, what kind of reporting do we get back and who takes care of, just looking at the overall way, the ones that are out there checking on the complaints? How is that processed?
I don't know, Ms. Odenkamp, if you can answer that, or Chief Duff, if, I know you're not prepared for that, but I don't know if you could give us any ideas as to how that reporting takes place? Anyone aware of that?
Basically, they, if they find someone, it's reported to the court system. They write someone a ticket. Other than that, they might write a warrant and go back and check on those animals at the later date. They're still not, they're still in violation, and they'll cite that person, and they'll go to the court, and it's up to the court, the court says in the dead line. Of course, you're talking about three animal control officers for Barron County, not just Glasgow. And there's a, just my only concern to me, I don't know how you're going to know the dogs, you know, when they're tethered for 12 hours. I don't know if we're going to get to stand there and watch the dogs 12 hours. And also, animal control has a very big budget, so you're getting ready up some, I mean, if you want to come up with some funds here to look at this. I think our last safety meeting, we were supposed to get together and talk about some issues that we have, and we've never talked to anybody, nobody's ever come down and spoken about as far as animal control goes. I understand what you're saying, but I think there's going to be a lot more to that ordinance than just voting it in, like, or we decide, well, then just going to fix the issue there. And I kind of agree, you know, I agree with handing out tethers and stuff like that, but you know, if you have a very, if you have a vicious dog and it tethered, who's responsible for that animal when it gets loose? I mean, we see that Glasgow issued that tether out, when someone event, who's going to be responsible for that animal?
That's part of what the training is going to be. Obviously, the animal control officers and anyone who would go out and hand out any of the systems are going to be systems that we've gotten through grants through reputable companies that are going to hold the animal that they're put on. They're not going to give them any kind of system, and especially animal control officers are very well-trained, they're going to know if an animal is going to be a detriment or a harm to the public or to the area of the community, and they're not going to allow them to put in some kind of system that isn't going to restrain the animal properly.
Chief would, when they go out, they may not look actually, if there's a complaint that there's more dogs on a residence than there's supposed to be, they probably might not ever check the dog itself. They would just talk to the people, right?
I think they would look at the dog too.
They would look at the animals also.
Oh, okay. And then, like I said, they always try to leave, a lot of times their biggest issues is finding someone who's home, a lot of times they're checking the animals, the owners are at work or something like that. They spend a lot of time going backwards and forth checking and trying to find those when these animals are, when they're issued to these animals. A lot of this comes when neighbors make complaints on animals or when the animals loose. There's a lot of loose animals in Glasgow. I mean, there's a lot of different type of tether systems, chains, I've seen it all. You know, there's some, there's some pretty decent animals within the city limits of Glasgow. And when you talk about those animals, there's some, you know, there's a great chance those animals can get loose.
Any other discussion?
I would just add quickly that this really isn't a major change at all, it's just essentially adding a time limit, which is still extremely lenient when you look at other communities and what they have in place, as carefully noted on time limits. Twelve hours is very lenient, I don't think it's asking too much for somebody to abide by that. I mean, it's, if it saves one, two, three dogs, you know, it's worth it. People are always going to break the law, but I don't think you should let that stop you from putting the right laws in place.
Just to answer another question, sorry Ben, I'm not sure if you were done. It says that no animal shall be tethered to a fixed point for longer than twelve hours in a twenty-four hour period. That doesn't say that you have to bring your animal in the house. That just says they can't be tethered to a fixed point where they've got a ten-foot, a ten-foot diameter circle to run around in. If they're on a trolley system or a swivel system where they can run back and forth, that's not what this is eliminating. It's just eliminating that dog that's in a ten-foot radius circle where they've worn the ground out in a circle, they're tethered to a fixed point. And that's why we're looking into getting more of the trolley systems and encouraging that sort of thing, where an animal has more space to tether rather than that small circle. So I just wanted to clarify there that that is only a limit to a fixed point tether, not a trolley system.
Is it appropriate to make a motion to table until a little bit more discussion with the police department and affected individuals? Is that in order right now?
We've had discussion with the animal control officers regarding this, and they were the ones who suggested we put in the limit to the weight of the chain.
Other discussion?
I was initially opposed to this because I don't believe it's enforceable. However, I think when this story gets put out by the media, it will get the attention of some animal owners. Some of them will comply simply because it's the law, some will comply because it's just the right thing to do, others will ignore it. But I think I've got an overall favorable impression of this ordinance.
Call a question.
Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance? We already, okay. Sorry, but you're right, we, motion discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? If we could, we'll have a roll call vote to clarify that, if you would, please, Clerk.
Booker.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Hammer.
No, but I just want to say something too with my no, because I have a dog that I have in my house also, but I just think there needs to be a little bit more information because I do agree with Chief Duff on the dogs in the City of Glasgow.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Norris.
No.
Odom Camp.
Yes.
Oliver.
No.
Trigg.
No.
Witcher.
No.
You have five no, seven yes.
Therefore, the motion carries. We will have a second reading of that at our next meeting. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a grant administered by the Transportation Alternatives Program, and I'd like to have Ms. April Russell speak briefly to this before the city attorney reads that resolution. April?
Sure. This is the next section of our gateway plan. It's the Transportation Alternatives Program. This section is Highway two forty-nine and Trojan Trail. The amount for the grant is one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, our match, which can include in-kind, it can include donated property, it can include moved utilities, all of those things. It's three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. If we apply for this grant this fall, it is awarded next fall. Then we have another year before we actually start. So we have two years to budget for it and put back for it should we decide to apply for it and be awarded. Like I said, this is the next step, the one we've started now. It's in the design phase, we'll start construction next summer. This would just connect on to that and continue with the gate plan. Is there any questions?
Let me give just a little bit more of an overview. The first section, as you know, we passed a year or two ago, was the first short section that's actually in design phase now, should be in construction before too much longer. The second section, we voted and passed, I don't know, a year or so ago, that was a two and a half million dollar section. The people at the state said that was a little bit larger than they cared for us to have, so basically that one has, it's not been denied just yet, but they, has been denied, excuse me, then they suggested that we come back and cut that down into a more manageable sized piece, and that's what this is. So this is a portion of that second grant that we approved to apply for a year or so ago.
And they really liked the grant last year, and the section that we chose to do, the flooding this year limited their fines, and two and a half million was just more than they had, so they asked me to tone it down and phase the second section into two sections.
So this is back to that school section that we talked about and really liked earlier. Do they still take in the schools, or is it going to stop just on Trojan Trail?
It's going to stop on Trojan, this section.
Because it will not cross the bypass?
No, this will go down to forty-nine.
Because the original one crossed the bypass.
That'll be the next section. That, like, if we are awarded this section next year, that would be the section we applied for to continue it on. We would take a year to design it, and then we take the next year for construction. So you're looking at four years before construction starts.
If you would, read the resolution, please.
This is a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a grant administered by the Transportation Alternatives Program. Be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the city, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, administered through the Transportation Alternatives Program for the Highway two forty-nine Trojan Trail multi-use path. This grant has a eighty-twenty match with the local match being three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. The total project amount is one million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred dollars. Be it further resolved by the city that Dick Doty, Mayor of Glasgow, shall be authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for the grant, and further, if approved, any and all documents necessary to facilitate and administer the grant.
Having heard the reading, do I have a motion to approve the resolution? So moved by Councilmember Neal and Second. Councilmember Honeycutt, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.